So I'd like to start this meeting by sharing our mission, Raleigh Organizing Against Racism. Our mission is to dismantle systems of racial advantage and oppression through education, analysis, healing, community building, and institutional transformation. This community meeting is part of our mission. So next, I'd like to introduce our guest speakers. First, Mr. Byron Laws is a Training and Capacity Building Manager of the North Carolina Accounts Coalition. Byron is a Raleigh native whose passion for helping others has guided his career. He has social work degrees from North Carolina A&amp;T and North Carolina State University. Welcome Byron. And Mr. Kyle Brazil is a Director of Civic Engagement at the North Carolina Accounts Coalition. Kyle is from Chicago and has extensive career in higher education and law. He believes in a transformative nature of justice and education in our democracy. He enjoys advocating by using his privilege to empower others. Kyle has degrees from Fisk University, University of Chicago, and most recently from North Carolina Central University School of Law. Welcome Kyle. Yes, now the presentation will begin.
Thank you Yuri, and good afternoon everyone. It is a pleasure to be here and we are super excited to walk you all through some great information on lifting your voice so that you can craft public hearing testimony. A portion of this work is going to be some background information about our democracy, about education on some very important pieces to our democracy, and we're gonna get right into it. I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to my colleague Byron as I share the screen here. Thank you all.
Good afternoon everybody. You ready Kyle?
Do you see the presentation?
Yes, it's on the screen.
Perfect.
Good afternoon everybody, I'm Byron Laws and thank you for the introduction Yuri and thank you for the invitation from Roar for being here. So this is Lift Your Voice: How to Craft an Effective Public Hearing Testimony. First, we're gonna, you can go to the next slide Kyle, we're gonna give you all a brief agenda of what will be included in our presentation. So a little bit of background about us, NC Accounts Coalition, and then we're gonna give some little background as well on the census, redistricting, and gerrymandering. Getting to a good portion of this presentation will be, you know, actually how to draft your testimony, and Kyle's gonna walk you through that step by step, and then we'll wrap up with making your voice heard at different levels of government, so where you can actually use that testimony that you're drafting at different levels of government. So yeah, that's what we have going on today. Thank you Kyle. A little bit about NC Accounts, NC Accounts Coalition is a nonpartisan 501(c)(3) organization committed to building a healthy, just, and equitable North Carolina through cross-sector partnerships, with using advanced systemic solutions for communities facing systemic barriers, including BIPOC, LGBT+, immigrants, low wealth. Currently, we have about 96 nonprofit partners with 85% of those being BIPOC-led orgs here in North Carolina. Next slide please. So now we get into the census and what's actually, you know, why it's important. As you all may know, the census is conducted every 10 years. April 1st is usually official census day, so that's usually when enumeration would begin, and the census is pretty much an initiative led from the Constitution that says, you know, every 10 years we're gonna take the time to count those who are in the country. You do not have to be a citizen of the United States, as long as you are here. When census takes place, you are to be counted. So the reason this is important, because we get into representation, so the census is used to determine the seats each state has in the US House of Representatives, as well as redistricting at the national, state, and local levels. So they use that data from those population counts to determine where people are, and then how to draw maps so that people have a voice and that can be heard. We also have the community planning and economic development portions of census, so that that is also used as a tool for community planning and informed decision makers for people in their communities, and just really using that data to figure out and see where people are at, what they need, and how to get people those resources that they need. So things like infrastructure, hospital, emergency services, things of that nature. And then also finally, resources, so census data is used for the allocation of about $675 billion to federally funded programs, so programs that range from Pell Grants to WIT, to free breakfast and lunch programs, those programs are all funded through census dollars. So then we get into, you know, how the census plays a part and how you are represented and how your voice is heard. So the more residents that are included in your state count, the more power it gets in the House of Representatives, and from there, the more of a say one has, now who is in the White House and, you know, who's representing them. So congressional representation, we look toward a college redistricting. In the 2010 census, we had 13 congressional seats, and we would have been able to get a 14th seat without the undercount of young children. There was about an undercount of 75,000 young children in the state of North Carolina during the 2010 census, which, you know, prevented us from getting that 14th additional congressional seat. This past census, the 2020 census, we did gain that seat, so just to kinda give you all a little picture there of, you know, how this plays a part in how we're represented on a national level. Next slide. So then, as many of you may know, North Carolina is growing and our population is rapidly diversifying, so as you can see from the 1990 census, it was, you know, 75% white in the state and then 22% black, and as a result, from the census data in 2020, you can see that those numbers are changing, so 60% white, 20% black, and then 6% other races and 3% Asian and Hispanic, growing to 11%. So I think currently we're the ninth fastest-growing state in the country, so this is just kinda show you that reflection in how rapidly we're diversifying as we're growing. And that's just a little bit the background of the census and how that data is used in regards to our daily lives, as well as how it's used to go into redistricting. And then, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Kyle, and he's really gonna go into the weeds of some of this stuff and give you all a great, more detail.
Awesome, thank you Byron. And friends, really, a large portion of this, right, is to make sure we all understand and wrap ourselves around the entire process of our democracy. There's two big things here. I think the first thing is just that those who show up are heard, right? And so as we're thinking about our democracy and the ways in which we can participate and become active, we have to show up. Voting often is the prettiest thing to talk about, right? It's a lot of fun to get out there and to vote, and then to watch CNN and see if your candidate won and do all of that, but that's not the only thing we've gotta advocate for. We talk about census, so if the census isn't a full and complete count in our communities, those roads don't get repaired, that funding doesn't come down, we have cuts to government funding, and then if we, in redistricting, don't make sure that this process is fair, we end up with a situation where politicians are picking the candidates that they were, they're picking the people and the districts that they want, as opposed to the people picking, right, the person who's gonna represent them. And so we'll get into some of the public testimony and we'll talk about, on the redistricting side, how to provide some really concrete public testimony, but this is applicable if there's a bill that's coming down, you know, for example, related to critical race theory, or in Raleigh, the, you know, some of the issues that are going on with the city council, you can use this to really, that second thing, to tell your story. And so it's important to learn a bit about redistricting. Redistricting occurs after the census is complete, and it is that process of drawing the lines. What happens, right, between, what happened between 2010 and 2020, as Byron articulated, population shifts. You know, we've seen a lot more people in North Carolina in the urban areas, a lot fewer people in the rural areas, and so we live in this country where it is one person, one vote. And so for the redistricting process, if you had, let's say, 50,000 people picking a candidate in one area and 50,000 in another area, right, over 10 years that population might shift so that one area now has 40,000, the other area now has 60,000, that's no longer one person, one vote. And so redistricting comes along, more or less, the basis for it is to make sure that all of those people are accounted for, that it's equal voting, and that we have this system of one person, one vote. And so when it works well, when it's fair, it reflects population changes, it reflects changes to racial diversity, and it's equitable, and the people can then turn around and elect the folks who will speak up for them, on the ground. When it does not work though, and that's what we call gerrymandering, it can be used to manipulate the outcomes of elections, it can be used to cut through the power that are within our communities, and that's what we fight against. We fight against what's called gerrymandering. And so there's generally two types of gerrymandering that I just wanna share with you all this afternoon. There's cracking and packing, and cracking, if you imagine, communities of color are fragmented, right? And so they come along and they separate those communities of color, so that those communities of color, even though perhaps they would have elected one person, now they're separated into separate districts and they cannot elect a candidate of choice. The famous example of cracking in North Carolina, in North Carolina, we live in this state where we have an example for all of this, because it's usually is, you know, the state where we do a lot of redistricting and gerrymandering and seeing. The famous example of cracking happened at North Carolina A&amp;T, where, you know, the lines for the districts were drawn through the campus, and so you had people who were in the same fraternity, maybe even, you know, they used to be in the same dorm and now they're just across the street, and they're going to separate districts to vote, they're voting for different candidates, and so they split the campus in half with the idea that they would not be able to elect a candidate of choice. And so that's one example of gerrymandering that we fight against, and as you all think through testimony for redistricting, one of the points that you can always argue against, of course, is this. Another example of gerrymandering is what we call packing, and that's when you have a minority population and all of the folks in that minority population are concentrated into a small number. And so on its surface, it may sound great, this community, as you see in the packing example, they're able to elect a candidate of choice, but in practice, right? A famous example is the 12th district in North Carolina, and this district, it snaked from Mecklenburg almost all the way to Durham, right? It was sort of this salamander snake that followed the interstate up from Charlotte over through the triad almost to Durham. And so the issues here, number one, you have all of these communities of color pushed together, so where they may have elected one or two, maybe three candidates of choice, they're only gonna be able to elect one candidate of choice, right? It also creates a situation where you have an incumbent who does not have to campaign hard, right, because they're guaranteed, they know that folks are gonna vote for them, that it's packed into this area, and so they don't work as hard. And then the other issue though is just the advocacy, right? The communities of Mecklenburg in Charlotte, the issues that they are facing there are a lot different as you snake up through those rural communities and then get to the triad. And so you have a candidate who's being elected from all of these communities that might have different interests, different issues they're facing, but they're forced to elect one candidate. And so packing is another form of gerrymandering where the people's power is diluted through unfair maps. And so you all, for redistricting, just be aware that there are levels to this work. We often talk as a state, you see a lot of spaces, the state work, but there is local issues, there's a lot of different levels that you can speak up and advocate for. The congressional lines, of course, we have the US Congress, and we had some, you know, pieces to this where US Congress maps are selected, we have legislative maps, of course, so the North Carolina Senate and the North Carolina House, and then we get into the county, where the county can, you know, come in and draw their lines based off of how they want their districts to look. We have city lines, so that's where the city council for Raleigh would come into play, and so their lines are drawn with the idea, across the board, equal population, and making sure you keep communities together. And then you have even smaller, you have school board, which consists in Wake County of nine members, each of whom represent their own districts within the county. And so just be aware, there's different levels to this, which also means there's different points at which you need to advocate for yourself and for your community. The argument here for us is that those who show up are heard, and so as you all are thinking through, you know, whether you wanna participate or whatnot, what you're speaking up for is your community. You wanna make sure your community is held whole, so as you heard with A&amp;T when it was cracked, the speaking up is making sure that community is together, or speaking out that a separate community, separate from yours, should not be added to your community. There's a lot of pieces here. And so with that, a fair process for redistricting, and what it looks like is access, including access with different languages, considerations, we were still, we were in a pandemic, depending on what I read in the news, it feels as though we may be or may not, but making sure that there's an online format, we wanna make sure that, for example, our elders and our sick, they still have an opportunity to speak up, and so PPP being available. We fight for consideration for working families, and so, you know, all hearings coming in the form of, in the middle of the day at 1:00 PM, we advocate for that, you know, some sessions would be at night, and so as you all think through this, some of the things that you all wanna make sure you advocate for is proper notice, is that there's no language barriers. We also advocate for education, and so a piece to this work is advocates on the ground at NC Accounts, and then of course for Roar, is educating folks about all of these processes. In an ideal society, it's not only coming from organizations like yours, but it's also coming from the elected officials. They're training the people and informing them about all of the nuances of a bill or about redistricting, and so that's what we continue to fight for in this process. And then of course, as we'll get to in just a second, opportunities for meaningful input. And so for redistricting, or for a bill that's going before the city council, or for discussions around the school board, it's important, we argue for meaningful public input at all stages, for redistricting at all stages of when maps may be drawn, if it's a school board decision, you know, at all stages, from when they bring in a consultant to when there's discussion, there needs to be an outpouring and an opportunity for people to comment. And so as I said earlier, legislation, it's decided by those who show up, and when you show up, it's important to tell your story. It gives a voice to your community, it allows for community oversight and input, it gets you on the record, which is an important piece, right? And separate from us, there's a lot of organizations out there that will litigate some of these issues that will come in, and so you speaking up gets it on the record so that there's a record that someone said, this community of interest, or this bill is unfair, and so it's important to speak up for all of those reasons. And of course, for the media attention, I have a 15-year-old and she's always on social media, and so not just to be recognized that you're doing it, but it's important that these stories are told so that our community can grow and that people can see all of the shades and all of the sides of what's going on. And so before the testimony, some of the things that you all wanna consider doing and think about doing, right? These are important pieces to make sure that you're able to provide the testimony. First off, attend the committee council meeting. There may be preliminary discussions on the topic, I know the city council in Raleigh, they'll generally be on YouTube, and I've watched a few of those on YouTube as they were happening live, for the North Carolina Legislature. They are often on YouTube, but you often don't see a recording, so they're live and then they go away. And so attending those council meetings, being aware if it's live, if you have to watch it, or if it's recorded, great, but if it's not, be aware of that. There should be sign-up notices with notification, and so what that is, is, for example, the North Carolina Legislature, there's a sign-up, you can put in your email, and if you're tracking something or if you're interested in finding out about a committee, you'll get an email that says, hey, this redistricting committee, or this committee on X, Y, and Z is meeting, or about to meet, or they met, or hear their notes. And so there's a lot of opportunities to sign up and get those notices, it can get, it can become a lot, but it's just one way to stay informed. Before your testimony, you wanna read the topic documents, and so there are a lot of news articles out there, there's a lot of ways that you can dissect that. I think doing that within community will help you, or if there's an issue coming up, doing that in community, because we all will have questions on that, even if you went to law school, sometimes you're not sure how this wording will really impact your community. So reading through that, reviewing the changes, and making sure that your testimony is accurate. If there's a portion of a bill that's been removed and that is your entire testimony, well you wanna make sure you know that before you get up there and speak. You have to learn the rules, and so the big thing of the rules is, number one, whether it is only oral, or whether there's a chance to upload it and have it in writing, so that's an important piece, so learn those rules. And then you wanna make sure you know the length, that's number two. The length is crucial, right? And I can think back on advocates from the 60s and 70s, you saw a lot of different tactics where sometimes they were only given a minute to speak, and so an entire group prepared a 10-minute speech, and then the first person gave the first minute, the second person gave the second minute. I pray we're in 2023 and we don't have to do that as a community any longer, but you wanna make sure that you know the time limit, if it's three minutes, that is not a lot of time. You can practice, you can get that information out, but you just wanna make sure you know you only have three minutes, so you don't spend the entire time talking about something else. If you need special accommodations, make sure you ask for them. In Durham, as an example of special accommodations, right? In Durham, during the redistricting process, there was a community organizer, a phenomenal young man, and there were community members here who only spoke Spanish, and so he was, you know, this community organizer, he was the person who spoke up and translated for his community members from Spanish to English. So when special accommodations aren't available, make sure you know that, and we can try to figure out, you know, our community can try to help you all figure out ways around that. Submit that written testimony, of course, and then the biggest, biggest, biggest thing is practice, right? Just practice in front of the mirror, get all of the butterflies out, just practice, 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 and time yourself as you practice. And so in drafting the effective testimony, there's a link that I'm gonna drop in chat in just a second, and it's a PDF document for you all, it's sort of the takeaway of this is how you draft it. The effective testimony, keeping in mind, you may have two minutes, you may have three, maybe you have five, and that's a lot of time, I think. The first thing you wanna do is briefly address the chairman and members of the committee. You know, of course, you're addressing them, and so you wanna recognize them. You want to state your name, you wanna say where you live, don't have to provide address in most cases, but they do wanna know, you know, if you give them the street cross-section or that detail, especially if it's a bill about zoning and it's putting up a Walmart across from your house, right? You wanna make sure you provide that detail. And then if you're representing an organization, state that organization. A lot of times, we're representing ourselves and we're talking for ourselves, and you'll see people doing that, and that's perfectly fine, but if you're working with an org, make sure you provide that. And then you wanna clearly state in the beginning whether you support or oppose the bill, and be sure to identify the bill, the number, the author, give those specific details. And so that's a good start, and you all see from that graphic there, we have a young lady, she is testifying, you know, stock image, it looks like it may be a courtroom, but you know, she's testifying, hello committee, my name is, I've been a resident, and she says how long she's been a resident of that neighborhood, and she would like to urge the committee to keep her community together, right? And so clearly, of course, this is about redistricting, and she's fighting to keep her community together. And so the other portions to this, keeping in mind, you have three or four minutes here, and you wanna practice to make sure you cut out what you need to cut out and what's in there, it's timely. You want to summarize your reasons for your position concisely, and so there's a few examples here, we'll go into in just a minute, but you wanna state why you wanna keep your community together, or why you, you know, let's say we were in Florida and we opposed some of the bills around critical race theory, why you support those positions and why you may not support the bill, right? So you wanna summarize those reasons concisely. I think what's really important for me, and as I hear these, the thing that resounds the most, is the story, the individual's personal story. And so if you can share an anecdote that relates to the issue, if you have one, and it has to be authentic, please don't make it up, of course, but make sure you share that personal story or anecdote that relates to the issue. You know, so for redistricting, those students who went to North Carolina A&amp;T, they had a story to tell, and in this last cycle, I was in Alamance County, and a young man from A&amp;T, he spoke up, he spoke up about the outrage from years ago when his community was split, but he also spoke up and said, I'm missing two classes because this is the only convenient time for me to come, for you all, and this is the only time that you allowed for something near my community. So I am a student, and I'm missing two classes to be here, and it's inconvenient, right? And so he was sharing his personal story about why he wanted a process that was fair and accessible to all the members of the community. You wanna restate your position clearly, and then you wanna thank the committee for your time. And so the three big pieces, the three big takeaways, right? You have the intro and the conclusion there, the three big components, is that from the previous slide, right? You list out the bill or the issue, you summarize your reasons and your position concisely, and then third is that you share a personal story or anecdote. To me, that's the meat, if you will, of the meal. And so just a few additional slides that are focused specifically to redistricting. When we talk about community, and you know, we say that a lot, for a lot of the conversations that we'll see for redistricting, and this this is timely friends because we will have some redistricting occurring this year. There will be a congressional redraw. We also have some really intense court battles that are going back and forth. And so it looks as though we will have a redraw of the North Carolina Senate as well this year. So this is all stuff that we can all advocate for and, and want to see our community whole. And so for redistricting testimony, it's important that folks define their community. And when we talk about community, we mean the descriptions of your community and how those people are connected. What makes your neighborhood unique? And why is that uniqueness important so that it shouldn't be separated, right? I think of Texas when I, when I talk about this. In the great state of Texas, in this last redistricting cycle, there was a map. There was an Asian American community, right? It was here. Let's just use my fist as an example. And they, what they did to that Asian American community is that they split it and they had a community above it and then they, in this community, they put an anchor through, like they threw the map through that community. And so they split it in three ways, right? So you had this anchored community. And so a portion of the community was mapped and districted for the community above it. And then it was split off to the sides, right? And so I think it's easy to testify and say why that community needs to be held whole. And so, you know, holidays or events or church or just all of the affiliations of that community. At the end of the day, it's about making sure that you elect the person or the people that will represent you. And so are there street boundaries? Are there significant landmarks? Gathering places, shopping centers, community centers, religious places? Or maybe even current political district boundaries that the community has sort of solidified around and have advocated for. And you know, being from Chicago, as you know, we, we get our communities split a lot. And so boundaries that folks who, who argue together, if they split that, they'll be able to split those votes, right? And so that's worth advocating for. You want to highlight that in your community, in your testimony. And so just some additional information here, the culture, right? And, and the three Cs. So for crafting your story, we say it's culture, it's concerns and it's count. And so, you know, the count of the people is their data to present that strengthens the story. The concerns, which we talked about, the issues, the needs and attentions from government that you all share. The culture, which is how we would describe who, you know, are part of the community. All of that is helpful in drafting the testimony. And then some last minute hints. And I'll see if we have any volunteers and I'll drop in just a second the, the worksheet for you all. We encourage that you, of course, avoid jargon, right? And, and I think that's just good and, and the committee or the legislature, whoever you're testifying in front of, they may understand the jargon, but you know, keep in mind, media attention, all of that. The world revolves around soundbites these days, so avoid the jargon. Stick with your story. From your story, if you have facts, provide those facts. I suggest being present at the hearing and so Zoom is an option. But also, of course, and, and this is in line with what Yuri said in the beginning. You want to be present in the hearing, right? Some of the best testimony I've heard, build upon folks who have already spoken and they say, well, I agree with them. They said this and then they build upon that. So be present, listen to folks, all of that. Try not to read if you can help it. It, it's three minutes and so if you have that type of memory, which I do not, do it, try not to read. And then, of course, the social media. Take a pic for social media, post it and, and that just adds on to the story, the com, the communication, all of that. And so for the testimony, let me drop into chat for you all the worksheet here. Okay. And friends, that should be a link to a PDF if anyone needs access to it. Or if you all don't have access, let me know and I can make sure I grant it properly. But you all should have access to that. And so what I'd like to do now is just take a quick pause. If anyone is feeling adventurous and, and courageous this afternoon, I'd love for someone to just provide, you know, a quick off the top of their head speech in a minute or two. There's some things going on in North Carolina that we're well aware of and, and you'll see on the slide, we put some quick options for you all. Either missing middle or redistricting or critical race theory in public schools or any other topic that you all may have. And so if anyone is feeling adventurous and courageous, please come off a mute. And we'd be excited to have someone volunteer for just a quick one testimony.
Folks should be able to either raise their hand or, or come off a mute and, and jump in.
All right, well.
Well, it's kind of like a suspense, right? When we are waiting for someone to jump in. This is not the off the top of my head. This is something I actually did after I attended Kyle's training a couple of years ago. I can share that with you and now I'm already realizing this will be torn apart, but that's okay. So my name is Yuri Yamamoto. Oh, this is for the redistricting comments. We were trying to ask for a longer time to study. My name is Yuri Yamamoto and I live in Raleigh, North Carolina, second congressional district. As an Asian American immigrant, I say that the current redistricting process is not fair to our community. Asian American and Pacific Islanders are the fastest growing racial group in North Carolina. I believe that our community has specific needs. Many of us are recent immigrants and need official translation and interpretation services to participate in a redistricting process. Many of us are also unfamiliar with the redistricting process. We need more time to understand information and articulate our responses. Personally speaking, trying to quickly understand how various proposed maps may impact my life has been overwhelming. I came to this country in nineteen eighty-four and lived mostly in Raleigh. My husband and I have six US born children and two grandchildren. In two thousand and ten, we became US citizens and began voting. All along, we have contributed to our community in many ways through our work, our children's schools, buying things, paying taxes, volunteering and donating money to help others. But I can't say that we have always felt welcomed or included by the American society. I want fair representation for all groups of people, especially the black indigenous people of color. I want to be able to elect representatives who are willing to listen to our stories and advocate for our needs, not just for the majority of the powerful. For that reason, I ask for more time and translation and interpretation services in a redistricting process. This is how we make America great. Thank you.
Thank you, Yuri. You started by saying we would have things to criticize and I don't think I have anything to criticize. That was phenomenal. And you all, just to sort of wrap around, some of the thoughts in, in terms of crafting this yourselves. Yuri, you summarized your reasons. You had a personal story. I think maybe you could have added some data, but you, I mean, the, the data for census speaks for itself. You stated your position with authority and it, it's, it's clear. I think it's clear and concise. And so you all, that is, I think, a phenomenal example of an awesome redistricting public testimony. I feel as though people in power, they get scared when folks start voting and they get scared when people start speaking up. And so Yuri, I think that's phenomenal. I'm gonna pause. Does anyone want to share their thoughts? Constructive criticism, feedback or praise for that?
I thought it was wonderful. I thought the use of her family and talking in first person made it, made it real. And not, you know, so abstract for them to tear apart. I mean, this is a family. This is, I thought it was very good.
Thanks to Kyle's guidance.
Well, just a little bit of guidance, but you had to have the courage to, you know, draft it and then stand up and speak. So Yuri, thanks to your, your courage. And so you all, just a quick recap and then I'm gonna pass it back to my friend Byron, my colleague. I think you covered all of the three Cs in terms of telling a story. You talked about culture, you talked about your concerns. And, you know, for these hints, you stuck with your story. You know, you avoided jargon and, you know, you had facts in there as well. So friends, everyone's gonna get a copy of this presentation at the end. There's, and, and I, and I believe the recording as well. There's also two other examples of testimony that you'll see, one from the Sharon Johnson. We, we pulled that from Democracy in C's website. And then another that's on YouTube as well that we pulled is from Michelle Winnington, who is an advocate in a lot of these spaces, is doing some amazing work. And so she has the Jim Crow two point O testimony. Give you all a ground for crafting your own. Byron, I'm gonna pass it back over to you for the, to, to round us out with some of the work going on, on the ground and the structure that you'll see out in Raleigh, Wake County.
Appreciate that, Kyle. Sounds good. And hopefully you all can see me. I apologize, my camera wasn't on earlier. So thank you all for letting me know in the chat that you all couldn't see how sad I am to be here with you all. So, so pretty much Kyle has laid out, you know, what all needs to be said in your, your public testimony. And what I am going to do for the remainder of the presentation is pretty much show you where you can show up to give these comments and public testimony. So we're pretty much gonna start hyperlocal first. So for those of you who do stay in the city of Raleigh, we're gonna go from the Raleigh city council to school boards and then to county commissioners and then to some of the other councils and things like that. So as you can see in your screen now, this is the Raleigh City Council. The composition is a eight member group that are elected for two year terms. Three of those members include the mayor are elected at large. The other are representative of a district. There are four new council members as of our election last year. As well as redistricting did take place as a result of the twenty twenty census. We were involved in that process. And there were some things that were changed, some groups of people were moved. And that may have to happen again depending on, you know, how many people do speak up and what groups do decide to advocate for fair and equitable districts here in, in the city of Raleigh. As well as, these are meeting opportunities for you to be engaged. So if you are in Raleigh, you have family here, you just really want to know what's going on, how to be more involved. These are the committees of the council. So there's economic development and innovation, growth and natural resources, state and vibrant, healthy communities, transportation and transit. So those are the committees that the council has. There also is a separate, you know, boards and commissions that are with the city that do similar work that you can be involved in as well. But this is just from the council's side of where we're speaking from. And these are the regular meeting scheduled sessions, first and third Tuesday of the month at one PM and seven PM. Public comments on the first Tuesday at seven. And on the third Tuesday, they are at one in the afternoon. So once again, when we start talking about having time so that you can, you know, engage albums of the community. This is an example of, you know, one time is that evening, another time is in the afternoon. But it's only twice a month, so that's still a huge gap for those who may want to participate. One of the things they did try to implement, as you can see here is a voicemail. So you can leave a voicemail now. It does not get read during the council meeting, but the voicemail do get included in the minutes, if I'm correct. There's also interpretation available if requested five business days prior. The public hearing portions take place earlier in the council meetings. And with the public hearings with the Raleigh City Council, each side who are in favor and opposed both get eight minutes. So in the case of the redistricting process that we were including earlier this year, we were invited to participate and give our feedback on the, on the maps that council had given to their special, the special committee on. I feel like it was, it didn't start off as redistricting, it started off with some other things in regards to council compensation and term lengths. And then they were tasked to do some, to do the redistricting work. They presented some maps. They, they invited us to one of their meetings. We pretty much, you know, used our skill, talents and data to, you know, let them know that these maps aren't fair. They, they are, you know, separating communities. There are silences in certain, you know, voices in the communities. So that was something that I myself did have to go to a Raleigh City Council meeting. And although, although I was involved as the, you know, my job in C counts, I personally felt it was important for me to show up in that space, you know, as a citizen, this is my community, knowing what I know. You know, in my time to say, hey, you know, this is something that you all brought this group in to do. However, you all still didn't, you know, make this a fair process in there. Or a large group who were, you know, negatively impacted by this. So as a result, you can go to the next slide, Kyle. Maybe this will help. So District C in Raleigh and District B are minority majority districts. So that means the majority of the people in this community are people of color and minority population. So during this last redistricting process, the city council took about fifty-five thousand people in District B and they moved them to District A, which is all, which was a majority white district, which you're not supposed to be able to do that, yet it happened. As well as when they moved that district, they also eliminated some early voting sites in District B when they move that group of people in that area. So this is just more so of a local example of how redistricting is important and what's happening here in the city of Raleigh. As well as a unique thing about the city of Raleigh, we have space that is unannexed, unannexed, which means it's just, anytime you're kind of driving, you see a sign that says city limits. Pretty much it's space that may belong to the city of Raleigh, but has not been annexed into the city limits yet, which means it doesn't fall into one of these districts. And most of that unannexed land falls in District B and District C. So you start talking about future growth and, you know, just what the city will look like. That's something to kind of consider as well in regards to that redistricting process and future growth. So that's the Raleigh City Council. Now we move on to Wake County Board of Education. So this board is composed of nine members elected in districts for two terms. Each school is within one of the Board of Education districts. And deals with issues related to school, but depends on county commissions for budget. So the Raleigh City Council deals with police, but then when it comes to education and things like that, that goes into the county. So we have our Board of Education. They meet regularly. The regular sessions is the first and third Tuesday of the month at five thirty PM. There's a three minute timeline for public comment. Sign up starts at eleven thirty AM on the day of the meeting and ends four thirty PM same day. So each kind of board, when it comes to their each kind of board, when it comes to their meetings, have, um, a different kind of signup approach. So as you can see here, this signup approaches are really, um, the window is a lot shorter than if you wanted to sign up for Raleigh City Council meeting. Um, you have a little bit more time in between each of those council meetings to sign up if you want to speak. Whereas here, um, the signup starts the day of at eleven thirty AM, um, and ends four thirty that same day. So, um, really a short window for those who want to sign up to speak. Um, and then the work sessions are at three thirty PM, the same day as the general meetings. Um, and that is the Wake County School Board. Um, and then this is the map, just to kind of show you how those districts, um, are drawn out. Um, and I have spent a lot of more of my time in the, um, the Raleigh City Council redistricting process than I did with the Wake County, uh, school board stuff. Um, but I'm sure there's a lot of things shaking there. Um, want to say it's the largest, um, school board in the state. So as we grow, these maps will change, things will have to be redrawn. So, um, definitely another place to stay involved and pay attention to what's happening there, um, if you are in the county. Um, next we have the Wake County Board of Commissioners. Um, so we have county commissioners who on a county level, um, do something similar to the, uh, city council members. So, um, the, this commission is composed of seven members elected by and serve the whole county. Um, four-year staggered terms, so you serve for, but all those, uh, seven members aren't elected or not put on the, uh, same ballot at the same time. Uh, must live in their respective districts, even though they're elected at large. Um, so similar, you know, kind of how we spoke earlier in regards to their two at-large seats in the merit for city council. Here, these members are all elected to, to, to do the work in large, but yet they do have to live in their respective districts, um, representation. Um, meetings are opportunities to engage. So the regular sessions are the first Monday of the month at five PM. Public comments are the first thirty minutes, five thirty to six. And on the third Monday of the month at two PM, public comments are the first thirty minutes, once again, two thirty to three. Um, and then sign up to speak, um, as well as written comments, maybe submitted online in person or by mail. Um, and with the school board as well as with the county commissioner, when it comes to a public hearing, um, those are really, not really, but those are advertised a little bit more. So then if you were to have a public hearing on a city council, um, just because those meetings take place a little bit more frequently. Um, and these are also the committees of the Wake County, um, Board of Commissioners. So Health and Human Services, Affordable Housing, Growth and Sustainability, Great Government, Public Safety, Economic Strength and Education. Um, and then here is the Wake County, uh, Commission, uh, districts. And once again, as the growth takes place, if it resets certain threshold, these maps have to be drawn to reflect uh, the change in population and growth. Um, so Wake County State Representatives and Senators. Um, so composition, once again, uh, these individuals are elected uh, to two-year terms, must live in their representative districts. Uh, thirteen representatives and six senators represents part, uh, represent parts of Wake County in the North Carolina General Assembly. Um, and then regular sessions, so they meet on Monday evenings and during the day on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, when in session, uh, long session or odd years, short, short session or even years. Uh, we are in odd years, so long session, um, is upon us. Public hearings are usually advertised on the legislative calendar. Um, you can sign up for them by email. Um, and then these are the committees, our House standing committees, Senate standing committees, uh, non-standing interim and study committees. Um, so once again, just, you know, who's representing you, where, on what level, um, of government? The North Carolina General Assembly, House District. So these, this is the map, um, just to kind of give you a little visual representation of those thirteen and six that represent you all. Um, these are how those maps are drawn. Um, and just, you know, just kind of give you a visual representation. As, you know, once again, um, as things change, you know, these, uh, lines are drawn differently. Um, districts are, you know, drawn and redrawn. So just, just as much as important to be involved here, um, as well as the other, um, spaces as well. Um, US Congress, so composition, uh, representatives are elected to two-year terms, do not need to live in their districts. Uh, senators are elected to six-year terms and represent the whole state. Uh, two senators and two representatives, Representative Wake, uh, fourteen representatives for the state. Once again, it goes back to this, gaining that fourteenth, uh, congressional seat, um, from the result of the twenty twenty census. Um, representatives do not draw their districts, the state legislator does. So that is very key here in our state in regards to where that power lies. Um, who has the ability to draw those maps to create that criteria and what that process looks like. So, um, regular session for calendars and you can track that stuff using the links. Um, the public hearings vary by committees, in-person testimony, usually invitation, but sometime committees request written testimonies. Um, the committees are standing special select joint, uh, commissions and caucuses. Um, so just to give you all the idea of the rundown there of what that looks like, how to be involved, where to be involved. Um, and then this, um, is a map, North Carolina Congressional Districts. Just to give you all the visual, uh, representation, once again, um, Wake County does have to be split because of the population here. So we can't stay whole, um, as a county on a congressional map. Um, just if you may have wondered about that. Um, but once again, uh, these maps did have to, you know, be drawn, uh, by a special master to try to make sure that the representation, um, was a lot more equitable than, than what was originally, uh, put in front of us. So there were public, uh, testimony, public hearing to, you know, hear from community members, um, on this matter as well. Um, and then these are additional resources. So, um, the Princeton J Man in Project Maps and Grades. Um, this will actually show you the grades of the maps that were presented. Um, I want to say you might be able to find the current maps as well, as well, that, um, were approved and that we actually used to vote. Um, and then the Dave Redistricting Tool is really cool, is really interactive and user-friendly. You can, um, put some, like, you know, we could take the, uh, one of the, the district maps or we just use and kind of throw it in there and it can kind of, you know, um, give you some data and, you know, really give you the ability to kind of, um, go into a local, more local to see exactly what's happening where it just has some great information, um, and resources there as well as all of the other uh, resources that are shared here. So if this is something that does speak your interest, something you do want to kind of take a deeper dive into, uh, please use these links to do so. I'm gonna share with others in your network who may be interested as well.